Monday, May 6, 2024, Inkster City Council Meeting is called to order. Uh, Deacon Rose, can you lead us in some prayer tonight? Everybody please stand.
Took that. And say the Lord's name with your worship. Y'all, we did take those off, took you out, become some of these thoughts and you can and it's like you about to look on this council tonight and the mayor, all the getting new relatives and the last time you about to make this city to hire your eyes and even that so far, then let me blood cover them in the name of Jesus, but I'll give the right mass at the to the stuff issues should come in total agreement, how could you walk the gun and shoot in three, well, I said that over in Jesus way.
Amen.
Let's do the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Medic clerk roll call.
She got my pen stolen.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Chisholm.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Councilwoman Rutledge.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott. Councilman Bishop.
Present.
Councilwoman Richardson. Mayor, you have a plan.
Great picture. Everybody had a chance to look at the agenda. I think we took off item G. Anything else we need to add or take off? All right, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
I need.
Shouldn't.
We probably moved the second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. It passes. All right, before we get to our presentations, we have the distinguished Luana Abney Mitchell, Wayne Westland School Board member. Please stand up and if you have anything for us tonight.
Yes, like.
We're here to listen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, audience and viewing residents. Well, first of all, I just want to remind you guys that this is the end of the school year. We have graduation proms and award ceremonies. So based on your schedule and your availability, I just encourage you to go to the schools that's in your district that serves our Inkster students for the ceremonies. And you know, you could check the website or you can call the school and they can give you the schedule. Um, I know Wayne Westland, uh, we have scheduled, we are scheduled to go to, um, award ceremonies, musicals and everything through the whole month of May. So just get out and support our children. And the other thing is, um, the City of Inkster graduating class of 2024, I gave it. What am I doing? I didn't give y'all the paper about it and I just have a few questions on here, um, that I need to be, that I need answered. Okay, me and the mayor, we did talk about having it right here at City Hall during the Monday, May 20th council meeting, but unfortunately because of the holiday, our board meeting got pulled up to that Monday.
Okay.
So we looking at Tuesday, the 21st, based on y'all availability.
Can you guys make it?
It's like a master size.
Eight time after five, okay.
And the next thing is that, um, the mayor and council, um, I would like for you guys to do a presentation where y'all, um, give the graduate certificate or honors. Just a little certificate that y'all can come up with and print off the computer and give it to the person that's graduate, right? As of today, as of 15 minutes ago, we had, we have 24 seniors that's registered. And the next thing is, um, about refreshments. Uh, we came up with two plans to have either cake and punch or to have, um, sausages, chips and a drink and hire the good fellows to do it in the parking lot. So it's based up to, you know, what you mayor and council decide that's best for us to do.
At what time are you thinking? Cause I know we have a summer camp meeting at night at the rec center at 5:30. There are a few of us probably scheduled to be at, um, can we do this at seven or what? Cause originally it was going to be on a Monday of a council meeting.
Right.
That's the only issue I see.
Right. Well, seven works for me.
Okay, it's for the guys.
And the guy like that meeting is, yeah, like 6:30.
It's gonna have to.
How many of y'all gonna be at the rec center? Do you want to do it at the rec center or?
It'll be easier for us. It'll make it easier for us.
We can do it at the rec center. Um, I got a little bit of pool, I'm on the commission.
It's good to have pool.
So we can do it at the rec center, that's fine. So at seven o'clock.
Yeah.
So do we want to go with the refreshments or do we want to go with the, um, with the dinner, the chips and the sausage and the drink?
Sausage and chips sound a little funky for graduation, so let's just go with the cake and punch.
Cake and punch.
Yeah.
Okay, so also the pens that I was ordering from the same pens that Inkster used, I showed y'all, please, when I took a copy of this, I didn't resize this, so it's the size of the whole page. But it's the Inkster pen and it just have a graduation hat.
You know, I have.
Listen, that's kind.
How many kids reach back?
You six.
Well, like as of right now, we have 24 that has made a commitment.
I have a gang of pens minus the hat sending my office right now.
So do we want to use that and not use the hat?
You're welcome to, that'd be free.
Because I mean, but the hat representing graduate.
Like I'm not trying to push you, you can go ahead and buy the hat.
So that's, that's my next question, who won't buy the hat?
You should have led with that. How much are they gonna cost? How much are they gonna cost?
It's on the paper I gave you.
Since you're here.
Fifty, um, 50 pens for $2.50, so it's $125 for 50 pens and $100 for the diet check charge.
So $2.23?
Yep, plus we have to pay an expedition charge because we have schedule.
Us late?
Yeah, imagine that.
Okay, I'll pay for the pens. Yeah.
Okay, so they already ordered, um. This is where he phrases. The reason they already ordered is because. Reason they already ordered is because I cannot call the mayor at 3:00 in the morning.
Yeah, you can.
And we was already behind schedule, but my committee people was willing to donate or whatever, it was gonna get done anywhere or another, but if the mayor's gonna pay for it, so who's gonna pay for it?
Wait, 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 wait. That's fine.
Who's gonna pay for the cake and punch?
Any other volunteers?
It's in your school district, the ones that you see at the bus stop every day.
We do the cake and punch.
Who's gonna pay for it?
Yeah.
Steve will help you. That's all I got, so we all said we're gonna have it on Tuesday, March 21st at the complex, 7pm.
May.
May. May. The same M and A, come on now. We got refreshments, we got pens, so you're gonna have your, um, executive secretary got some money to do the certificates or you want us, we could.
What are you doing?
She's a visionary.
I came up with the idea.
Visionary.
The thing I had to do is dedicate.
Get all the credit. Get all the credit.
Okay, just give me all the names, we'll do certificates.
Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate you.
And we know who guessed that gonna fall on. So it's 24 students or 50 students? Why do we have 50 pens? They probably don't sell them their smaller quantities. All right, so y'all all gonna have one too.
Doing the pours.
What? You doing the buns? You would spike the buns, fellas, isn't that? Next on the agenda is our presentations. Uh, we have Elise Collier of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority reading a proclamation, is she here? Uh-oh. We're gonna miss her proclamation. Okay. Well, if she, if she comes, we'll, shouldn't be long to read, but okay, we're gonna move on to item B, RRC presentation. Ashley Williams.
Yes.
Everybody know Ashley Williams?
Yes.
Look, Mike.
We've been city council, good evening residents, I know it's a little light outside, but time wise.
Who that might close to take?
All right, so I am representing the planning commission and I'm gonna bring everybody up to speed on our progress in becoming a redevelopment ready community. So first of all, what's RRC? Um, the redevelopment ready community is a voluntary technical assistance initiative offered through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation and we're participating because we're trying to make our city more attractive for developers and developing projects. So they're taking us through an assessment of sorts in which they're looking at our processes, helping us streamline them, um, leverage our resources and attract investment, which will foster economic growth and kind of bring us up to what they consider to be best practice. And so there's two paths, there's an essential path and there's a certified path and we are on the certified path. It requires a little bit more work, but, um, we'll be able to communicate to the communities that we are in a position to, um, win, so to speak, um, and that we have gone through our systems, we have strengthened them and that if they work with us, then both parties should be able to reach their fullest potential. There are six best practices, the first one is plans and engagement. And so they're taking us through our master plan, our capital improvement plan, our economic plans, making sure that they're thorough, making sure that they're aligned with our vision for our city. They're looking at our zoning, making sure that, uh, we have the types and forms of development that we desire in our community. I don't think it's a secret that the country is experiencing a housing shortage and Michigan and Inkster are no exception. Michigan has, I think as far as their housing stock, 70% is still single family homes. Inkster reflects that, a majority of our city is single family homes and so, uh, we're missing what they call the middle, like the mixed housing, like duplexes or fourplexes. Um, most families are no longer the four family homes that, you know, were after World War II where a lot of these homes were built. They're going down, the average home is about 2.5. And so we're not accommodating those individuals who have smaller families or they're single and they're working and they need less square footage. And of course, with less square footage comes a smaller price tag. And so, um, they're helping us update our zoning, um, our development review, making sure that we're transparent to the community, um, showing them what the process will look like if they were to work with us, if they wanted to do a development project, who would they be talking to, what the application will look like, what are the timelines, if they have any questions, who could they follow up with and just be really transparent. Making sure our boards and commissions, um, are attracting the type of talent we think we want or who the best fit is for each one, so something like a job description, you know, where you say, hey, if you have these, you know, skills or this knowledge, you will be a best fit here. Making sure that we have orientation materials so that they have an easy transition and, um, making sure we have bylaws and that our bylaws are up to date. Uh, economic development, just making sure that they're looking at our economic health and how we can actually market ourselves to other communities or other developers and say, hey, you want to work here or you want to live here and this is why, there's all the great things about Inkster. And then they'll help us prioritize our redevelopment sites, so, um, we can work with them and the community, the community will give us feedback, they'll say, hey, this building over here or that building, these are the sites we would like to work on first. And so we can advertise that on our website and say, you want to work with us, we would prefer that you start here or here or here and so forth. And so, um, we'll have full access to the technical assistance team, um, they'll even help us with match funding for technical assistance opportunities, you know, with our social media and our marketing, uh, free event registration, et cetera. Any questions so far?
You're doing good, you talk real fast, but you're doing good.
Oh, am I? Oh, calm down, okay, sorry. So, uh, recent progress, some items that have been submitted, um, or created include the city council handbook for newly elected officials, you guys should have a copy hopefully, and the zoning and housing board of appeals onboarding or handbook. So they didn't require one for all of our boards and commissions, um, the main four were the planning commission, the DDA, ZBA and the city council handbook. And so we have one for planning commission and DDA, but we needed to create one for city council and the ZBA. And so, uh, specifically what I would like to point out by at least one of those documents is like in the city council handbook, there is a four week onboarding checklist that says, hey, make sure you get this email from this person and that you follow up with these documents and you submit this, and if you've never been in this position before, hopefully will help center you and what you can expect, what laws you should be looking out for, um, you know, doing a tour of the city, et cetera. So, uh, hopefully make that transition. I think that was brought up maybe back in like December or something.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And so, uh, same thing with the, the ZBA, it's a little bit shorter though, it's just telling them what the ZBA is, what their roles and responsibilities are, what laws they should be looking out for. Um, and there's an acknowledgement at the end saying, you got this material, um, because that was another RRC requirement, we needed to be tracking that people actually did get this information. So we also updated the ZBA bylaws, which you guys should also have a copy of. And one thing I'm hoping to influence the city on is like coming up with a standardized system for how we name our policies and procedures. So, you know, I'm working on it. And right now, working on the internal review process template and working with special, you know, projects and community development so that, as I mentioned earlier, when people want to come and they want to work with us, they know what to expect, it's transparent, they know when to submit their applications, what timelines, who their key point of contact is and, um, what, how they can best get approved. And these are the items that I want to bring to your attention, the big ticket items is a lot, it's a long list, but, uh, these are the ones that I want to bring to city councils attention. So our master plan, um, the last one was created 2017 and is recommended that it get updated every five years, so we're a little behind. We are working with McKenna to get it done, so they're currently in the process of, you know, updating the master plan and hopefully the city residents will hear soon about some of the participate, you know, activities they can participate in and give their feedback about how they would like our city to look. It does require annual assessment and progress report, capital improvements, capital improvements plan, um, looking at our infrastructure, our facilities, our parks, our technology, our public participation plan, how do we plan to be intentional about who we engage with, making sure that everyone's represented, um, and our economic development plan, looking at our talent, do we have a recruitment plan for getting that talent so that we can leverage our resources and put ourselves in a position to win? So this is just, uh, some references to the website and some tools that they have, including the best practice handbook, which goes in more detail than I presented tonight, um, RRC training information and some housing guidance, including the missing metal or the mixed housing that we're looking so. And that's it.
Then he sucks it.
Why don't you tell them why it's so important to be certified?
It's important because it communicates to the public that we, like I said, it strengthen our systems, we have systems in place first of all, that they're strong and that we'll be able to hopefully expedite or run smoothly through these processes so that both parties can benefit and reach their fullest potential. So being certified, um, and it also helps us, you know, be eligible for money, which y'all like and lit. Am I missing anything?
No, you, you hit it at the end.
The money part, flooding.
Money. Very important, because as people come to us, want to do deals, if we could sweeten the pot by having some money in our pocket for infrastructure or, you know, facades or whatever, it helps get those deals done.
Exactly.
Mr. Mayor?
I just wanted to let the public know, um, when Ashley had literally been trying to get on the, I'm sorry, not the DDA, the planning commissioner for a year prior to her being appointed to it. Three years. Three years, I, well.
Sorry.
I didn't know it was that long, but it's, I did fly. Once she got in on board, she hit the ground running. And so a lot of times, that's what we were talking about, in the city, we have talent that's right here or we hope the talent comes back home once it leaves and sometimes we don't always get that. So it's been a pleasure to see the work that she's put forward or put forth rather, and then send us an email to actually just see the quality of work and what she is eager in participating on and making sure the ball keeps rolling, because oftentimes once we get appointed to commission, boards and commissions, we get on there and then that's it. And then the commission just goes to fun. And then a lot of times persons walk around, they say they're commissioner, but then when people ask, well, what are you actually doing at commission, they can't really show the work that's being done. And this is a great step in the right direction because it helps everybody out that gets appointed or just a resident in the city knowing what that board and or commission is about, or if it's something they want to be involved in or say, oh, hey, I have that expertise, I never knew I could, I could act on it in this way in serving my city. So she has a myriad of resources that we are, one, happy that she is putting before us and that we'll be tapping into and this is just awesome, I'm excited, I know my colleagues have been excited as well, and she doesn't stop, she holds your feet to the fire once you tell her yes. And you just have to pretty much be like a pet owner, take the leash off and just let her go. She does her thing and she comes right back.
I thank you.
That's all I ask.
Shins or feedback? Or what are your questions as my professional training tells me to say?
There's always questions. But this is a process, we're not finished yet, so we appreciate, like Steve said, the work she's done and we invite other residents, we know we have talented folks out there, please jump on board, she did this as a volunteer, I mean, she's doing presentations, she keeps us on point, meeting with the minute, hey, we gotta do this, 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 okay. Did Elise come in while we were talking? Okay, no, Elise. All right. Onto the consent agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
And probably move discussion. You guys, we have a couple legal bills on here, we discussed at previous council meeting, so I want to quickly talk about that, we're briefly. Uh, we did meet with our current, uh, law firm and we discussed the bills and payment of the bills. And we went over the history of what happened last year, we agreed to disagree and whether it was properly, the rate was properly increased or not. But nevertheless, since the rate did increase, we approved July's bills all the way through January, last council and this council without catching, or at least most of folks, without catching the rate increase. Therefore, I believe that compromises our legal position, um, because we approved each individual bill which had the increased rate in it. Um, so I'm recommending that we actually pay both bills, even though I still maintain that it wasn't done properly and I'm still disturbed by it, but I don't want to put the city in any type of additional jeopardy. If we were being sued by the law firm, there could be attorney's fees there, there could be interest on the bills owed, uh, since the council, former council and this council approved two, I think, without realizing, this council I don't hold is responsible for it because we didn't know, we had no way of knowing whether the rate increased. But I think we should go ahead and pay these bills, they did the work, um, you know, even though the rate, I believe, was, was increased improperly. I'm sorry. Does anybody else want to add anything? That's just my two cent, um, yeah. We, we kind of, I don't want to be out of order.
Does that house move?
I mean, I get it, we, we understand, but hey, Inkster, Inkster will have to pay their bills, but we, we have to be on point, we, we have to be more, we have to recognize what's going on because it is the residents' money. So we need to be on top of things a little bit better, I think moving forward we'll do that. I just hate this situation happen, but we have to deal with it now and, and keep moving forward. Anybody have anything else? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay, it passes. What was it, nay? Oh, just keep going, oh. Okay, it passes. All right. Boards and commissions. We had, uh, somebody had a nomination to appoint Stephen Dooley?
And I did.
Okay, you did that.
This week, uh, sixth.
Okay.
For Parks and Rec.
All right, Stephen Dooley to Parks and Rec Committee, um, is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, so probably move the second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Passes. We have a motion, I see Deja Rose, uh, that was mine. I can't make it though, because somebody help me out. Yeah.
I make a motion to appoint Deja Rose to local officers compensation committee.
Support.
Okay, we've been properly moved and supported, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Passes. We have any others? Do you want to?
Yes, I'm, I'm gonna just a person, um, Antonio Edmonds to the, uh, commission on aging.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we can probably move the second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, it passes.
And then I make a motion to also appoint Antonio Edmonds to the downtown development authority.
A second.
We got a, a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. It passes. Do we have any other nominations?
Who was the first one who was, uh, commissioned aging?
Yes. I don't think he's old enough to be on the commission on aging. It's okay. We ain't gonna ask for no birth certificate, we gonna let it, let it fly. Any other nominations? Okay, we'll move on to ordinances, we have a second reading, you go ahead.
Second reading and approval of the request to create a neighborhood enterprise zone, NEZ, in the planned unit development district, 72 parcels and the site known as Annapolis Point.
So move.
And probably move the second, discussion. See, we've been talking about this for three months. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, say nay. It passes.
No, I just wanted.
I'm sorry.
I had a question, you didn't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Come on, we can.
Was the deal approved?
It was closed. They paid.
So here's the things that we should have done, um, correctly, we didn't do, because the original council request had $400,000 and you guys changed, you changed it. So I think that should have came back to council for approval.
What are we changing to?
You minus 400, minus 40,000, wasn't?
That was a down payment.
Right, no, 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 no. Okay, so, okay, I think the three, eight, two bears, three, it was four, something like that. But it was 400 total and they paid what, 40,000?
80,000 less, 40,000 for the down payment that I already paid and 40,000 they paid for the quiet title action.
Right, okay, so you, but, so, so the dollar amount was what, we, instead of being 360, it was what?
I mean, what do you mean, the closing amount?
Correct.
Closing, it was 360 instead of 400 because they spent 40,000 on the quiet title action, which we should have did before we sold the property.
She's saying, but shouldn't we have approved, ended, mend their contract between them, like feet, the right, and all right, didn't we do nothing?
Oh, we did.
I thought we did that at the last, um, I thought we did that. You get the minutes, I don't remember that.
I know we discussed it openly.
Yes, yeah, I was talking, we talked about it. But there's no resolution in it. You call minutes, I don't think you will, I know it discussed.
It's in the last meeting?
It's the 15, last thirty. It was on the.
April 15?
It's the 15, you got to eat. Okay, so here's the names.
Is there anything else, the specimenings?
No, not, but not. It's on this 22nd, only for the thing.
I think the last time we extended it, we discussed it too. Remember, we, we.
We look at and just bring it back up.
Okay, okay. We have new business.
Consider approval to renew the contract for dispatch services, 911.
So moves.
Support.
And probably move to support a discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Passes.
Consider approval to renew the contract for animal control services located in Romulus.
So moves.
Circumstance.
Probably move the second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Passes.
Consider approval of Gethsemane Missionary Baptist Church to utilize former Inkster High School grounds for parking, no more than 50 cars for Friends and Family Day, May 19th, 2024, location of event is 29066 Eaton Street, Westland, Michigan.
Probably move and support it, discuss.
I did a quick question. So, cause we're on, it's across the street, right? So.
Down the street and across the street.
So are they doing anything with like traffic and so that's like a pretty major street, right? Like, so you don't think it's a major street?
I mean, it was a major street.
Yeah.
I suspect they're using their shuttle bus, their church bus.
They're not like having to walk.
No. That's a long walk.
No, we're gonna be shadowing.
I just wanted to know. Okay.
Yeah, that's a long walk.
Just how they get in there? Just how they getting that? Y'all gonna kill me. Thank you, Jerome.
Any any other wonderful questions?
I got something.
That's second time in a suite. You look.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes.
Consider approval to purchase two vacant parcels. The parcels are located on the south side of Hopkins Street between John Daly Street and Bayhand Street. Parcel IDs noted for three thousand dollars.
Subway, second.
And probably move to second. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Consider authorizing the city to approve D P S I contractors for the expansion and renovation of the D P S building, including alternates number one and number two, and the demolition of three buildings for a total contract sum of one million, seven hundred twenty-six thousand, one hundred forty-four, with a ten percent contingency of one hundred seventy-two thousand, six hundred fourteen and forty-one cent.
Some more.
Second.
And probably move to second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Consider approval to amend the intergovernmental agreement between the County of Wayne and the City of Inster in the amount of eighty-five thousand, nine hundred fifty-five that was previously identified for pool repairs at the Booker Dozier Recreation Center that will now be used to aid in the cost of roof repairs at the aforementioned site.
Some more.
That sounded good. Should probably move and support it. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Consider authorizes authorization for the City of Inster to solicit qualifications for applicants.
I don't know, this is H.
Yeah, I know. That's okay.
Consider authorization for the City of Inster to solicit qualifications from applicants to participate in the City Neighborhood Stabilization Program, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, to redevelop rehabilitate foreclosed properties assigned to through the First Rider Refusal.
Probably moved and supported. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The passes. All the participation. Okay. Jesse Schell.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. For to announce that top ladies we having our luncheon on May the eighteenth, and I hope all of you have got your tickets because one of our speakers will be the Chief of Police. And you know, we only have a few fundraisers because we are trying to get more teens to participate because you know, one of our first top teens was our mayor. And then another top teen. And one of our top teens that graduated from Inster High School. She received her PhD from Michigan State University on May just twenty-sixth. And these are young people we should keep up with because we wanting to come back like she is to work with us. And her name is Tanya Marie Uttergrove. She did not have a student district, but our kids are still going on to college and getting their degrees. And they will be coming back to work with us because this is one I'm working with to come back and give her talent to us.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, City of Inster. First, I want to say thank you to the whole city of Inster. The Inster Police Department has thrown countless numbers of events these past three months. And with the participation of the city, I just want to say thank you and just continue to support the Inster Police Department and these amazing events that we're having. Which brings me to June the eighth. The Westland Police Department and the Inster Police Department is joining up together on June the eighth. We're gonna have a family fun day. We call Faith Blue and Summer Fun Two. It's gonna be at the Gosemity Ministry Baptist Church, two nine zero six six Eaton Street from eleven to two. Flyers will be seen over there, as well as the Inster Police Department's Facebook page and Instagram page, as well as the City of Inster's website.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee, Luana Abney Mitchell. You get double time tonight.
No.
Oh, okay.
Good evening once again.
Good evening.
As a resident of the City of Inster, there's just a few things that I wanna compliment the city on and a few things I wanna complain about. So the first thing is I had an opportunity to go to The Bliss. It's a new banquet hall on Cherry Hill. Awesome. Our church had a women's convention there. The food was delicious. They had some green beans hung fresh. They snapped and picked it. Green dogs. The green beans was delicious. We had like a brunch. So it was breakfast food and lunch food, but those green beans was out of sight. So also, it just broke my heart to find out that Foot Locker is closed. Now, back in the eighties, I used to bring my girls out here to what used to be, it was Foot Locker Outlet then. Used to come out here all the way from Taylor and Detroit just to get some eight-dollar Nikes. So to see them gone, it really breaks my heart. So this happened all in the same day. I went to the to the luncheon at the bridge. I went to downtown Cherry Hill. I went to the post office. The lobby was open, but it was no clerk. It's completely dark. A sign up there that say closed due to shortage of staff. Now, I know that's a government job. And I know somehow some of these seniors wouldn't mind working there for a couple of hours a day. So maybe we can talk to the postmaster, Carl Trump. He was able to stop the mail during election. Talk to somebody, you know, even if we get some of the seniors in there to work a couple of hours a day. We need that post office. We do not want to, and the mail, and I talked to my mailman. It's really bad to the point that they thinking about removing the post office. We can't afford to lose no more things in Inster. Nothing. So maybe you can reach out. I mean, I know it's government. Maybe you can reach out or do whatever your magic is, but we we need our post office. We need our foot lockers. We need our everything that we have in Inster. So now the next thing I want to talk about is, oh, I only got three minutes. Okay. So I am in the midst of starting a homeowners association in District Four. Yay, Steve, District Four. But I'm not able to walk and do all those houses. And I'm not able to pay for postage.
You and me both.
So my thing is, if it's the size of a campaign sign, I want to know if I can put out about eight signs on Avondale and eight signs on Cherry Hill from from Bee Stanley to Insteren. And on Avondale, you know, Cherry Hill, from Insteren to a bit more. So I want to know if I can put those signs out to announce a meeting at the complex, like on a Thursday or or whenever the meeting is. And I will pick the signs right back up. So the signs will probably be out there for three days.
Turn around, look at that man in the back.
Tell him.
He don't play. He says.
Three days off. So yes, but I I will talk to him, but the last thing I want to talk about is I am on the beautification committee. And I have been talking to the people on the beautification committee. And unlike you guys and Mr. Living, he be there. Unlike you guys, when I start talking, they say, shut up. So but my thing is, I would like to beautify the City of Inster. I was thinking about putting signs on our lipoes on Michigan Avenue. Now, the way I'm thinking about, we can pay for the signs, the flags. The way I'm thinking that we will pay for these flags is they have two flags. One that say the City of Inster, one that say AKAs. So use our sororities and our nonprofits to put up a sign. First, they had to put up one for the City of Inster, then they can acknowledge their organization. Or even, we don't want to, you know, we get upset about the dispensaries and stuff in the City of Inster. But they have those big signs that's in the on the sidewalk that's blowing away. It's against our office. And I told us, no, so. So but if we get them to get them, I mean, wait a minute. If we didn't get his, he had used to play. And the after that, and they store fried, and they, you see what I'm saying? It would pay for itself and it wouldn't be a cost to the city.
Miss Best?
Yep.
How real good to me. Uh, Mr. Business, uh, Abney Mitchell. Luana?
Just real quick, regarding the meeting location for the HOA, I I think we have multiple locations in District Four that are always, they always had their doors open. So we could reach out to those different locations and see if they would host the meeting versus always, you know, trying to have everything at the rec center, especially because it's something in district that you're trying to do. So I do owe you a return phone call and we'll put our heads together on that part.
Yeah, because I've been reaching out to you for three months to talk to you about.
That is incorrect. I have receipts to prove it. You all get up here and falsify information. That's gonna spread overnight.
April Garrett. That is funny.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and residents. I'm here in a different for Alpha Kappa Alpha, and I want to introduce our president, Dr. Shatina Jones. She has an update she would like to give.
Hello, everyone. And I don't know what I just got committed to, but here we are. So a couple of things. I always want to extend grace and my gratitude to the City of Inster, as well as Inster Police Department, who we partner with on a lot of things. And we had an amazing medication take back day. It's something that the community has asked for, and we continue to partner with our organizations in the City of Inster. So thank you so much, and we're looking forward to things in the future. One of the things that we want to share is our Community Shred Day. We know that things like cybersecurity, mail theft, as we just heard about, you know, maybe our our P O boxes and our mailboxes will be here or not be here. But in thinking about mail and theft and all of those things, we want to be able to we want to be able to provide this to the community as a way of which getting it out your house and it's bring cleaning in the process. We will be accepting computers, laptops, electronics, anything that can go in a bag as well as documents. We will be collecting those, and that will be on May eighteenth at Booker Dozier from ten a.m. to one p.m. You do not have to get out of your car. All you have to do is just drive up and we will we will get the items for you. You do not have to actually shred it yourself as we will have the truck that will do all of the work for us. So we are hoping that you all will join us in that, as well as it's Mental Health Month, and we will be sharing information about mental health. Next month, in the month of June, we will be advocating for for black businesses in the City of Inster. We have Black Dollar Day, so we're going to be asking our members, as well as our social media followers, to support businesses in Inster, Michigan and Western Wayne as well. So we started to collect that information already for this year. So we're hoping that we can continue. The Good Sister was talking about economic development. It starts with our our black businesses as well. So thank you so much for your time and have a good evening.
Can we get an electronic version? Back jump.
You can. I can send that. I know how to get y'all emails. I'll send that to y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mac Willis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And all the directors and all you beautiful people. I'm here because I
FaceTime video.
I want to provide a vending machine for the Inster Rec. We used to have one, but there is no longer one there. I have a company that's called Ink Town Vending. Overall, the vending machine will provide convenience, accessibility, and cost saving, while also providing consumers with access to goods and service. One of the convenience of a vending machine is a quick, easy way to purchase items without having to go to a physical store and interact with salespeople. I understand that the preference of the customers will change, so I will have a suggestion box for people's demands and things that they might want to see in the vending machine. It will have cold items as well as snacks. So I'm asking the Council and the Mayor for approval and the Director.
Okay, we'll discuss tomorrow at staff meeting. Talk about it, because we haven't talked about it. But we'll definitely talk about it. Clark, tomorrow on staff meeting. He had a letter. He gave us a letter.
Yeah.
I had, I'll bring it. All right. Thank you, Mr. Willis. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Justina Sage.
Sage.
Sage? Okay, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
And my name, Justina Sage. I'm the owner of the property twenty-six, three, one, six, Oakland Street. Yes, I've been living there over twenty years.
Put a day on it.
Okay. I am a owner of a property on Oakland Street. The address is twenty-six, three, one, six, Oakland. I've been living there over twenty years. But this time around, my kids took me to South Hill. I'm living in South Hill right now, but I put my house into rent. The lady that living there, she she having disability. But the water bill, it turned very terrible. And two thousand twenty, I was getting horrible water bill. I was back, back and back to the water department. And they put a water bill on my tax. And that make it very hard for me. So now, at this time, again, they are started for January. I have four hundred and forty, forty-five dollars water bill just for one month. And the next month was three hundred and twenty-eight dollars again. So I went back to the water department and they giving me different, different answers. Some people telling me that the post office delay, that's why they put increase or interest on your bill. And then another lady said, it's because our machine break down, it give any kind of figure. I said, this one, I had to see the mayor or I had to see some responsive, some responsible person that will tell me what is what. This is too hard, water bill. And we used to go through this. Since two thousand twenty, I've been going through this all the time and Larry Marley, may his soul rest in peace. He die now. He went and sue Inster and they gave her a little bit of money back. And that was terrible. I love to live in Inster and I coming back to Inster. I want for you to really regulate the water system here. Nobody can live without water. So this is my appeal to you guys. Please, you all, please, you all, please help us. The people that are doing the water, they doing any kind of thing. Because it was a time that I came, I came to pay my bill, I have forty-five dollars bill. But when I reached the lady, because she don't see my bill in my hand, she told me it was sixty-five. I told her, okay, I have my bill in my car, let me go get it. She said, no, 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 come back, it's forty-five, it's forty-five. So I paid the forty-five dollars that day. And it's one of the thing I, I observe that the people that I'm not saying all of them, but some of them, they are not very honest with us. You all please help us and your assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Tazza Ward.
Good afternoon. How are you guys doing?
Good afternoon.
Name is Tazza. I'm the executive record, I'm sorry, the executive director of Community Up Cup in the city of Inkster. We do adopt the elder program, and we've been holding a Juneteenth celebration for almost six, this will be the sixth year in the, um, city of Inkster. This year, we want to add a peace walk. We have a lot of deaths, a lot of killings going on in our community. I was born and raised in Inkster, and I can say, I'm sorry, I get a little emotional. Half of my friends are dead to, um, gun violence. The kids I went to school with, a lot of people I grew up with are dead to gun violence. And there's gotta be some kind of way that we can stop this and bring unity together in our city. Juneteenth was created to bring unity. It's to bring all different, um, organizations together to give back to the community. We haven't had really much success with the different organizations coming in to join us, but we have had a lot of help with, um, donations and things like that. And some organizations have, like Task Force, has been with us since, um, day one, helping, um, supporting us. And, um, We Rise has been with us also. And these two ladies have just joined us for the peace walk. And we want the city to, um, you know, back us with that. You know, cuz we need peace in our communities. Too many deaths, too many deaths. I lost two friends, back to back, real close friends, like, uh, maybe a month apart. Um, I lost my brother, my nephew to gun violence. We also have, um, Juana, she does, um, gun violence in the city of Inkster. Hopefully you will join us too. But we do need this walk, this peace walk, to bring unity in our community, and I hope that the city will, um, be there with us. The peace walk, oh, go ahead. We wanted the peace walk to start from Inkster Road and Michigan Avenue. The March, um, South Side Corner toward John Daly and to the park. So when we get into the park, the celebration will begin with the kids and the community. So, um, what we do for Juneteenth, we give back. We give the kids hot dogs, we give them free, um, popcorn, prizes, they play games. It's like a community event where we're in the park, um, where different people from different walks of Inkster can meet each other and, um, unite. So I hope that if any other organizations is out here, that they will come and join us and give back to the community. You can set up a table and give back to the kids in the community and adults in the community.
What, what day? I'm sorry.
We are doing it. We're holding it on June the nineteenth.
Yeah, what time?
Wednesday.
What time?
At twelve until the park ends.
Okay.
Yes.
So the parades, the walk starts at twelve, then go into the park and then the whole celebration?
Yes.
Down Michigan Avenue, start at Inkster Road to John Daly and then in the Inkster Park. Right, Inkster Park?
Yes.
So they going down Michigan Avenue, Lewis. Going to Southview Center. And they're going to play half the cashing.
Yeah, okay.
We've have partnered with the, um, Wayne County Rec State. So they're, um, partnering with us, with the city. And also I wanted to add, we do, Cup has been doing a adopt the elder program in the community for almost seven years now. I had no, it's no organization that comes out and help us. Um, the funding we get is from the community, from people in the community, the regular citizens in the community. Now, what adopt the elder does is we go out and we assist the elders with light grasswork, housework, and, um, doctors appointments if, if, if need be, if we can find volunteers to do that. We've been running this program successfully. It's been a struggle for seven years. I get the kids, the volunteer for free. And you know, I give them pizza. Um, we clean the parks out. So we do need some more help from the citizens, from the city, from the citizens, from different organizations. We need help to keep our citizens in our community, in their homes, our seniors.
Okay, thank you.
Can I get a flyer for both, um, things that you just mentioned?
Yes, I'll give it to you. I'll send you a fake, thank you.
Thank you. Will Miller. Mayor, Council. Good evening, everybody. My name is Will Miller. Uh, have a solicitation request for help for the Inkster Housing Commission. Our third annual, um, um, resident appreciation and now Ann Safety Day is gonna be happening in July of this year, July twentieth. Uh, we're in the stage of looking for sponsors, um, to help out with it. We, the first two were quite good. Uh, we're trying to improve on that, so we're reaching out for sponsors for the event. I got a spot on my Facebook page, and I'll be handing y'all things over time, cuz I know where all y'all at. So I'll be bringing some stuff for you guys to see. Um, but look out for that. That's something that we're doing. We're trying to get sponsorship within the next month or so. Um, for myself, uh, Cosman Chisen started me off on that with his appointment to the DDA. I've been curious as to what's been going on with the Downtown Development Authority for the city for a little bit. So I was trying to, since somebody was added to it, I was curious to see if we had, if there's a director for it now, if there's a plan for it. What's the state of the Tifa, if there's some information I could find to find out what's going on with the presentation of the M U D C program? That's, the DDA is gonna be profoundly important with regard to doing that. So I'm curious to see what's going on with that organization. Is it solvent now, or is it something that we move for, you need help with it? What's going on with it? So I'm trying to find out that. With regard to the N S P program, um, I, something that I'm, I'm striving for with regard to that program is to try and get the Housing Commission to be one of the first folks that's given the first rider refusal with the city with regard to that. We have so many people reaching out to us with regard to housing. So when it comes to that opportunity, if there's opportunities in though, if there's buildings in there that we might be able to acquire to help house some people, we'd like to know about it. You know, so if we can, we can, but we'd like to, when the city's done, gets their opportunity, we'd like to be at the table with it to look and see if there's a possibility for us to help house some people in the, in the community. Other than that, I appreciate y'all. Thank y'all so much. Thank you. He said, Gil. George Green.
Alicia and then awesome members, Mayor. My three minutes I'd like to spend on my water bill.
Steve Boytonite.
My three minutes, I'd like to speak on my situation with the water bill. I talked to a lot of, uh, citizens of Inkster, and presently they're getting estimated bills. I moved here ten years ago. They put in a brand new water meter for me with the transmitter. Um, in January, I got my first estimated bill, and it was for three units. I normally only use one unit every two to three months. And what I normally do in January, excuse me, or December, I pay like a hundred and forty dollars, and it covers me for the whole year. It's been like that since I've been here. And my question is, when are we as citizens gonna start getting our actual bill opposed to estimated bill? Cuz that's seventy dollars compared to, that's the twenty-two something.
Unfortunately, when the meters don't read correctly to the system, then the system kicks out a, a estimated read, which may not be accurate, like you just said.
Because I read my meter, and my meter, isn't my meter actually accurate?
It should be. But see, we don't, when they went to the automated system, what, eleven years ago, ten years ago? Eleven years ago? Um, they wanted to eliminate the meter readers, cuz you used to have a reader outside your house, but a person had to go to each individual house and read the meter that's sitting the bill at. So they went to this system that's supposed to be transmitting the information. It didn't, it just never worked the way we hoped it'd work. Uh, a lot of times, uh, it won't transmit from your meter, and then the city have to send you out an estimated bill, a guess. It's a guess as to how much water you're using. Um, so you're not the only person who has an issue with it. The good news is we're replacing the system.
When is that gonna happen?
We, uh, hope to close deal in August. We hope to roll out the new meters in the fall. Um, and we're gonna completely new system. So we hopefully won't have the, the problems with the new system that we had with the old system. It's been like that since we installed it eleven years ago.
So I'm still gonna be getting a seventy dollar a month estimated bill? And I would pay a hundred and forty, a hundred and twenty dollars. It would cover me for the whole year.
We could have somebody go out and look at it.
Everything in my home is energy efficient. I got an energy efficient toilet, energy efficient washer, uh, showerheads, faucets, everything. Detroit Edison gave out a lot of that stuff.
Okay.
And so my question is, so you just said it, we, it's gonna hopefully be by August?
Yeah, we had to borrow the money to go out and get the new system. It's three point five million. But we still may be able to do something, get his card, come out, maybe check yours, maybe we can get yours working properly.
Problem is with that is a lot of people that I have talked to on Facebook or whatnot in our Inkster, um, situation. Um, they said people come out, and then they still get like a three hundred dollar bill the next month. A lot of people are really pissed off about this.
I know.
And you expect someone else earlier was speaking about attracting people to the city. If you want good people to come to your city, you need to have good service. It's just that, it's just that.
You right, you right.
That's my, thank you.
Antoine Hawkins.
Uh, good evening, uh, Council and, uh, uh, citizens of Inkster. Uh, my name's Antoine Hawkins, and I'm on the Young Lawyers Council, uh, for the State Bar of Michigan. And I'm holding a, uh, free community event, uh, May eighteenth from one to four. Uh, it's, uh, I'm covering, uh, social security disability as well as Medicare one-on-one. I'll be covering supplemental security income, disability insurance benefits, uh, disabled adult child benefits, uh, as well as widow's benefits. Uh, I'll be providing free dinner, so we have dinner, uh, and everything there. So I would love to see everybody come out and, uh, support the event. Um, it's gonna be at, uh, three zero zero four three Parkwood in Inkster, Michigan, which is, uh, Pentecostal Temple. And, uh, I would love to see everybody out there.
What time does it start?
Uh, one PM.
All right. Do you have a flyer for it?
Uh, yes.
Appreciate it. We can, we can push it out on social media.
And then do you have, um, if you could send like the digital one to the clerk and she'll?
She'll send it out to you, Michael. And then probably give each of us something. I appreciate you. We got a phone call. Somebody told me you'll come. We appreciate you providing that service, by the way. Okay, anybody, we do? Madam Clerk?
Um, no comment, Mayor.
Okay. City trailer, I don't know about that. Uh, Mayor and Council. Councilwoman Rich.
Just a reminder that if you're still in need of, of free smoke alarms with free installation, uh, the Red Cross is still doing that. Uh, their number is three, one, three, four, nine, four, three, four, three, two, and this is free. So parties, oh, I'm sorry. So you could take advantage of that. Also, I did have a question. Dairy Queen closed, closing?
I heard somebody talking about that. I heard they're expanding or something.
Thank you. Just to talk on that.
Yeah, um, so, uh, and then I actually spoke with Mr. Will Miller about it too. So on Facebook, there's a whole lot of discussion about Dairy Queen being closed, and it appears that they were bought by a different person who closed it and looks to rebuild it as one of the grill and chill Dairy Queens, like you see on Ford Road, where they serve food and they're open year round instead of seasonal. So right now, from what the owner was saying on Facebook or someone that was speaking on the owner's behalf, it is closed. They are gonna rebuild it. Could be totally different. And which is an improvement to the site. Some, unfortunately, some people within the city wanted it to stay the same and think it shouldn't change at all. But he was saying that it was dilapidated and it's out of date for what Dairy Queen's standards are.
Also, I did have a concern regarding, is that the bend up here where N B D Bank is?
Oh, flash bin.
Flash bin, flash bin. Um, can we make and clean it up a little bit? It looks terrible.
It does look a little ragged.
Going through downtown, it's, it's horrible. Um, one more thing is that I had a meeting with, uh, Mr. Lee Shirley, uh, the U S Economic Development Administration from Washington. He did say that there was, um, matching funds available for business construction to have assistance for that. It's a one-on-one match. It was, um, for Inkster, it would be like a twenty percent match that we would have to come up with. He, uh, said it was, you can use your local funds, which we don't have, uh, but you can also go to the state. The state may have contributions for that. And also you can obtain, um, some donors, private donors, to try to get to this project. So I would like to give you that information, and maybe you could reach out and contact him, cuz we could use all the grants we could get. That's all I, thank you.
Thank you. Housewoman Howard.
I don't have anything to say.
Councilwoman Redditch.
No Thomas tonight, Mayor.
Councilman Bishop. Uh, for me, Housewoman Scott.
Uh, I do have a quick question. Uh, what are? What can we do to help streamline these different, uh, like middies and? What can we do? Everybody good? Okay. I just, duck over, everybody. What can we do to help streamline, um, some of these commissions and stuff like that? And doing something similar to what Ashley did for each, uh, commission? And like, can we as the city kind of put that forward? Or do we have to just kind of encourage each commission to, um, take on?
Some of the important commissions like Tifa and DDA really haven't been functioning. So A, we have to find folks who are interested in, in volunteering and who would take the lead. Like whoever heads the DDA has gotta be into it, you know, because DDA is very important. Tifa, we usually, most cities collect Tifa funds. I think I went to Raul's State of the City, and they collect a couple hundred thousand dollars a year from the Tifas, the Tifas. We, we collect nothing. And when we built like the Justice Center over there, our, since our Tifa has no money, Tifa's supposed to be paying toward the payments. We pay out of our general fund, um, because our Tifa generates no income. So we, and it's, and it's built to, we have to, we have to get these things rolling with folks who are actually gonna do something. Sometimes people sit on board's commissions and do nothing. They just wanna say they're a commissioner. We need people who actually gonna work, but we need to take the emphasis.
That's what I was gonna say, cuz like with the Z V A thing, um, Councilman or Mayor Pro Temp, sorry, um, Chisom mentioned, like, they're kind of at a standstill, cuz we have just, we're just appointing people, but we're not saying like, okay, guys, like, this is how you start, you know what I mean? And this is, and, uh, thanks to Ashley, like, the Z V A now does have that, like, you know, blueprint. But we have like the DDA, we just have, we're keeping appointing people, and I don't wanna keep appointing people. And then we're all just kind of like sitting here like.
They don't even, they don't even meet.
Yeah, but is there enough, there's nothing that we can do, or it's something that they have to take on themselves?
Uh, we, we can be, we can lead that up, you know? Find the right folks and give them the blueprint. Tell them what we want them to do, and, and it'll cut them loose, say that.
And then shop Inkster.
Mayor Pro Temp. Yes, um, so speaking on the Z V A first and foremost. Thank you. We were talking about that, so their meetings, um, cuz we need to get that going. And I think we need to go ahead and just speak on that tonight, so we know we're moving. Uh, they're supposed to meet the first Thursday of each month at six PM in the city council chambers. So I'm assuming their board members, I know this should go out? And then their board members should get ready to have their first, I guess organizational meeting, right? Okay. And what all, who all needs to be there from, I guess, either and/or planning department?
Definitely. Them two over there.
One and two. And is that it? Outside of all of the commissioners?
Yeah, commissioners and them.
Okay, so in that case, I guess someone needs to send out an official notification. I'm alerting them, I don't know who someone be, that's why I'm looking. Oh, the clerk. Okay, there we go. So we got something going, so the clerk's gonna send out an official notification to the.
Sorry, Mayor Pro Temp, but normally these boards and commissioners, they have it where they have elected somebody that is basically the. where they have elected somebody that is basically the president or something.
We don't, that's what we don't have.
Oh, right. So once they get that.
So you got to have a meeting.
They have to have their meetings and they have to keep minutes. Their minutes have to be available and, you know, they got the Open Meetings Acts requirement and all that kind of stuff.
That's why we got to have a first meeting. Because they've been appointed and nobody is moving. It's just at a standstill, so.
So like our clerk has to attend to take the official minutes for the first meeting. You know, because it's just like, you just send it, yeah, well, you can have people sit up here and then we are going to be.
The economic developer, the planning.
They can be, take one to record.
Somebody has to be there to take the official minutes, to record who is going to be what and is going to do.
None of us are going to be there. Who's going to kind of spearhead and kind of push them in the right direction? So when that first meeting happens, we're very clear coming out of the first meeting who's, you know, taking, who's the treasurer, who's the clerk, like, you know, secretary, like, different things like that.
It's usually the youngest person on city council that does it.
Alrighty, so that's in stone? I did get some calls, again, these conversations are coming up about the adult foster care homes. And it's been a conversation that has been going on for some time, that's been talked to with our state rep about. It's been talked about on city council, it's been talked about on, with the state senator. And it's coming like in a circle again, because I got some phone calls about, I guess, one of them. I'm going to have to get the, I guess, the address for that particular home that homeowner is mentioning with regards to the care and just see what we can do for, as far as from rescue or the police department with facilitating, I guess, better care for the residents or the patients there. It's, it's regulated by the state, but I'm getting a call about a complaint. I don't know what's going on over there. So I'm saying that it's happening again all over the city where people are calling, even though it's regulated by the state, they want assistance from the city to enforce the landlord to do whatever it is, whether the occupants are just walking away and being out all day long again. I'm not exactly sure, but it's just putting it on everybody's radar. Trash cans are being out again. Just a note to everybody, please put your trash cans out at the desired time, six P M. The day before your trash day. Three P M? The six? Somebody been operating illegally. And then collect them the next day.
Don't make me write you up.
So at the, at the code enforcement event that took place at the rec center, I did commit to the gift cards for what you were going to do with giving them out to however you rake those resident shards. I'm still honoring that commitment. I just have to pick them up. They're, they're here. It was a fundraiser I'm supporting and I'm going to donate them to you and, or turn them over to you. So we need to meet this week so I can get those over to you. And then please sign up for Code Red if you haven't done so already. I'll be here after the meeting to help you do so. And that's all I have.
All right, real quick, so we get out of here. Summer, our second summer camp meeting is at five thirty, May twenty-first. If you didn't make the first one, we had a great meeting. Oh, yeah. Smart, smart, smart. So please get there. Lunch with the mayor, May sixteenth at noon at the Complex, our first one of the year. So please come, enjoy some lunch with us. We got some good food, good food coming. I don't know if people, first of all, let me wish all the mothers a happy Mother's Day in advance, in advance. That's courtesy of Councilwoman Richardson because I would have forgot. Our rescue was in town last week. I don't know if you guys heard, John's Good Time, it was a good look for the city of Insta. Wednesday, they came in and shots footage of the bar, how it was, and then they took two days and renovated and Friday came back. I had a chance to go Friday, myself, Mayor Pro Tem. It was a very good look for the city. It looks great.
Wednesday and Friday, because you almost didn't go.
I was falling asleep sitting there, you know? But we were there, stayed outside for hours just to get in. But it was definitely a good look for the city. It's good to have another restaurant, a smokehouse, I love smoked meat in the city of Insta. So that's great. They had some celebrities in there, Big Kev from the Smokehouse Show on Netflix. He was there and he gave them the recipes. The ribs were unbelievable. Unbelievable.
You do, I got that.
It was great. So at the same time, last Friday also, we had our hookah lounge opened up on Insta Road between Avondale and Cherry Hill. And I didn't realize it was going to be a restaurant also. So Quinn Myers and a couple of the police officers invited us to go out. So we went, cut the ribbon. You got to check out the food, y'all. It's good.